Angie, you want to take the roll, please?
Okay, uh, copy.
Here.
Katie.
Here.
That's Jeff McCann.
Present.
John Normal. Uh, EB Dunn.
Here.
Okay.
Okay, our first order of business is to adopt the meeting minutes from the January 4th meeting. Do we have a
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes.
Anybody second? John Normal seconds, all in favor. I opposed. Carrie. Okay, your first order of business. PLZBA 2023 0002. Uh, 6107th Street, two-family residential area, a special use permit is being requested. The applicant, Rob Caparudis, is proposing to convert a former banquet hall into a church, which requires a special use permit. Is the applicant present? Okay, come on up. And would you like to introduce yourself and tell us what you want to do, please?
Uh, my name is Rob Caparudis, and we are a church that operates out of, uh, currently the Boys and Girls Club in Troy, and we're looking to purchase a building that is a core section of Troy and want to make it that our permanent location.
Okay, um, can you tell us a little bit about the church?
Uh, so we've been in existence since, uh, 2006, and, uh, we've been operating out of, uh, the Rockfish Hall location for 15 years, and then we moved to the Boys and Girls Club recently. And, uh, basically, we're a house of worship that is looking to continue that in a different location.
Okay, so you're going to leave the Boys and Girls Club and come up to this place, this location, and wh- uh, when do you plan on being open?
As soon as.
No, I meant, uh, I meant day-wise. Once you, if you were to get in there, like every day, just Sundays?
Sundays and then some evening events.
Okay, and Sundays would be what time frame, give or take?
Seven to one in that time frame.
Okay, 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and then a couple, couple of evenings, you said?
Yeah.
Which like what, early evening, uh, well, evening, like to 11 o'clock, or?
Yeah, no, 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 definitely in the early hours.
Early evening, okay.
And it varies between like Monday through Friday, depending on what's happening.
Right, but we're just trying to get an indication of what impact you'd have on the neighborhood, you know what I mean? Right, if you're doing like band practice in the middle of the night.
So, uh, yeah.
Yeah, that would be painful, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, we have any questions, other questions for the applicant? John?
Do you have any plans to change the physical layout of the building or to kind of changes to the lighting?
Uh, not, not exterior, just interior, just like to make classrooms and stuff like that, that's pretty much it. Nothing on the outside of the building.
And what about lighting?
Just inside for Sunday mornings, very minimal.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have any, um, currently, I mean, I guess my thinking is that if you're operating out of a Boys and Girls Club, there's community outreach involved?
Yeah.
Is that going to carry
Absolutely.
into that?
Maybe even like, oh, only more so. Like, we want to have a, a presence in that community more in the sense that it's a neighborhood, and we want to be able to be present there, um, in the aspect that we can actually minister to the city as well as from just the building itself.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? EB, Jack? I'm just curious, like, where you got your money to, uh, I'm saying, my business, I'm just saying, you know?
That's a good question, but we've been operating for like about 17 years at this point, uh, storing money to the point where we could actually buy our own building.
Oh, okay.
Renting to the point where we get to a place where we can buy our own place.
I see, okay, all right. Is anybody here, is speak in favor of the proposal? In opposition? You have to come up and introduce yourself and ask the question, please. And what's your name?
Hello, my name is Anna Denny. My mother, Gail Ruffer, is a neighbor right next door. Um, we submitted some questions to the planning committee, did
We're just zoning. If you commit, if you submitted them to planning, then we didn't get them because we're zoning. You go ahead and ask the question, maybe we can answer off the top of our heads. You live right into the house to the south on Third Avenue?
To the north.
To the north, across the street?
Across the street, correct.
Across 107. South of 7th Street, the White House on the corner. I walk by there like every night in my life, so that's why I was just trying to straighten out in my head, whatever. Okay, go ahead, ask us the question. You have to ask us, and then we'll
Challenges in the past there, um, with the, what was going on before, so we wanted to know, is there going to be any alcohol, uh, requirements?
Well, I would hope that it's a church. Anybody question? Yes, that's why I asked what, um, what his hours were, etc. So, all right, that's one question about the kind of act, well, it's not bad activity, it's just a couple of bad parties they had. Uh, the place was nice, but, um, I understand exactly what you're saying, so we'll hold that question. Are they, do you have any others?
Three, um.
Okay.
Will they be requesting an alcohol, um, uh,
Permit?
license permit?
Yeah.
Um, what would the hours be till at night? What is?
I think you already answered, but we'll get that clarified also.
Sorry, I thought they were sent over, um.
Well, it's probably It's probably the kind of questions that the average neighbor would have, which is the kind of the questions I was leading for, and Katie was too. I, you know what I mean? So even if you forgot it, I doubt it was probably something that was out of the, uh, was out of the ordinary. You just don't want your neighborhood affected. That's your point.
Will be new ownership? In other words, I think Brad Stevens had owned it before, will it be?
But these people are going to buy it.
They're going to buy it.
Yeah, so we're going to get that answered, and he's gone, or Brad.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so now, um, Mr. Caparudis, do you want to answer the questions about alcohol? Hold it, before you do. Is there anybody else to speak in opposition? Okay, Tina, is that you? I can't really see you pass there. Okay, so maybe, Mr. Caparudis, you could sit down until he's done, or until she's done.
If I put this back up there?
Let's not worry about it, just talk with you.
All right, I'm trying to say. Tina, Tina yours, and 3300 Sixth Avenue. Um, one question, does this effectively make it a tax-free property?
Question, we'll find out the answer.
Okay, and then also, the church, sometimes they do weddings or parties, or this, that, or the other thing. Are you going to be doing those? I'm talking to you guys, I'm sorry. Will, will they be doing those things, um, there also? Right, yeah. Yeah, and I'm sure with the church, what happened before, um, probably would not happen again, which you never know, because you don't know the people that will rent somewhere to have their party, or the baby shower, or whatever. That's, that's right, that's right. It sounded like it was going to be all good until they're there at 3:00 in the morning, and then the shooting started. I got crazy, so, those are my two questions, the tax exempt, and that.
Anybody else to speak in opposition? Anybody, um, zooming to speak in opposition? Okay, then, would you like to answer those questions?
Sure, sure, uh, if we feel like you can answer first.
Uh, we have the alcohol, the hours at night, which I think you already answered.
Yeah.
If it's going to be a tax-free property, and if you're planning to rent it out or have weddings, and then have people to receive.
So, no, we're not looking for an alcohol license, we're not asking for that, of that nature. Um, it, it obviously, as a church, would be asked for the, the tax exempt, which we already are as a church. Um, we don't plan on renting it out, there's no desire for that. We don't have any desire to have weddings in that place. The only thing we would do is if someone, a congregant, asked to have a wedding there, we would host a wedding, but that is absolutely not the norm, would be the abnormal event. It's normally going to be Sunday mornings as services, and then on occasion evenings, but not a, uh, to all hours of the night. It's going to be a rehearsal for things and, uh, some ministry things that happen during but not all hours.
Right.
Absolutely.
Can I ask the related?
Absolutely.
Um, for the services and for the special events?
Yeah, sure.
Where would they park?
Uh, in the parking lot. Parking lot, that we have the parking lot in the side parking lot, and as well as like the we do, exactly. Exactly, if we did, then we would be blessed.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have anything, uh, else we wanted to discuss, or do we want to decide whether or not they should get a special use permit?
I just, I have a question, does a special use permit, um, pertain to that specific use and this specific owner, and does that then go away, or does it stay with the property?
The, well, the special use permit is for the use itself, so if somebody were to come and a different owner with a church, and there's not a break in, you know, there can be a period of time in which the use has been deemed abandoned, and then they would have to come before, but if it went like right from a church to a church, then it would run.
Okay.
Um, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
And just before, I just want to comment on, I know that there was a question about whether it'd be tax-exempt, um, and I just want to make sure you're all probably aware, but that can't be something that's considered for purposes of the special use permit. And before anybody makes a motion, do you want me to kind of just go over the criteria that needs to be contained within the motion?
Sure.
So, a special use permit is a permitted-use buyer's own code, subject to this board's, um, decision as to whether or not the proposed use is in line with the comprehensive plan, and that it will not adversely affect the neighborhood, and essentially that it's in harmony with the surroundings, that it's not going to, whatever's proposed isn't going to change the essential character of the neighborhood. That's what this board has to consider.
This one does not, because it's type 2.
Okay, so, with all that being said, if we have no further discussion, do we have a motion, Ms.?
I'm sending the motion.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Um, Chair, in regards to PLCPA 2023 0002, I would like to make a motion to approve the application for a special use permit. This is based on the contents of the application, the information that we heard this evening appears to be something in line churches in line with the comprehensive plan of the city. Uh, the plans for the property itself are in harmony with the neighborhood and there's been no evidence that will have an adverse impact the neighborhood, or the detriment of the degree of, or an emotion to, uh, allow.
Okay, we have a second, second, eighty seconds, um, and on the motion, Katie McLaren.
I vote yes to approve.
Jack McCann?
Yes, to.
Kathy Conroy, yes to approve. EB Dante?
Yes.
Yes, to approve. Tiffany, write your vote, Ma, in front of me. And, uh, John Normal?
I vote yes to.
Okay, so there you go.
Great, thank you so much.
Good luck. Bless all those drivers
Right.
who take the road test in the neighborhood.
Yeah, right, right. If you've got a couple of them. Next case, PLCPA 2023 003, 3278 Sixth Avenue. Mark River, Neighborhood Residential, High Density District. Requesting area variances. The applicant feels alone, is proposing to renovate an existing three-family residential building. Perhaps you can take your, uh, excuse me, could you take your conversation out, God, you? That's right. Well, who says my vote? No. The applicant is proposing to renovate an existing three-family residential building and convert it into six-studio apartment dwelling unit. Two units on each floor. The following area variances are sought, minimum lot required, uh, minimum lot required, relief of 2,900, 25 square feet, front step-back, relief of 10 feet, size relief of 7 feet, maximum density, a relief of 46 units, parking space, relief of 6 parking space. So, with that being said, it'd be
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello? Hello?
I can hear you, I think there might be, I can't hear, um, other people though.
Anybody hear me?
Oh, she turned, did you turn that back on? Neil, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello, hello?
The problem is that the, um, the, we have that horrifying screeching sound that you can't get past here, but I think we've just, um, Elena, I believe, has perhaps fixed that, so go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
Okay. I can hear you guys, should I go ahead?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, we have an existing vacant building, three stories. Um, generally doesn't comply with zoning, we were told we had to get zoning approval to get six units, that's two per floor. Um, the crazy stats are because zoning's out of line with the existing character of the neighborhood that it applies to. Um, so it's the usual request for, uh, a relief from the parking, the off-street parking, which can't be accommodated. And the unit density. Uh, the other items, like the setbacks, are because it's an existing building, we are building within the existing footprint, that's it.
Yeah, I think, uh, well, I know my, um, my one issue with this is the density. I mean, the other things, you're right, they're already there already. The parking is what it is, but why do you feel you need six, um, yeah, six units in this building, making them like small? Go ahead.
So, the market, the, the owner of the, of the project has, uh, quite a few other, uh, the, the owner's Joe Johnson, you've probably seen him before in here, he owns a number of other properties in the neighborhood. Um, what he's finding is that there's a demand for studio units as opposed to, uh, four-bedroom, three-bedroom units, so, um, this is response to the market conditions. So that's why we're asking for the two per floor. Um, there's three stories in this building, the zoning doesn't even permit three units, right? The zoning's that out of whack, so.
All right, we'll go there, because that's being changed, so forget that part of it.
Well, they've been trying to do that for a year.
Okay, but still, they're going to do it, so let's just forget about that, and we'll just go with why you need, you need three.
We think it's, uh, it's, it's market condition, studios sell, three bedrooms don't.
Okay, that's the answer. Okay, do we have any other questions for Neil? Go ahead, Jack.
Uh, my question is, when you say that the, uh, there's a market demand for this, what brought you to that conclusion that studios would be more feasible than, uh, the building that's vacant currently? Uh, where, where does that, the information come from?
It be, it comes from the owners, the, the, the developer's own experience, they have dozens of other units, and their studios go like hotcakes, and their three-bedrooms sit. So it's their own experience in the neighborhood.
Any further questions? Anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Come on up.
First of all, I'd like to point out that he's probably just having a little fun here, the long-term change of experience, more movers, this end here. I'm getting it out to know if he's, who I called and signed that. Um, I'm opposing him because of the party, he's, he's got, he's on the house, uh, with six-studio apartment, but he's not on the, or, or first-studio unit, and he's in a drop, well, um, it's, it's deeper than the other areas, Glenn is done, um, because they need to get some of the this stuff, who, that, or, you don't bleed over, or, you know, so far, I'm just Glenn. So, in the collective state, it's more difficult, but the stewardship is now organized. The perfect mark, it's too big driveway. Like, I, no parking, that's, none of there, so you don't have to bleed over into that, and the rest of the house is going up, or either two or three, and then some are going down, so I'm using something like now, as of the end. Whenever garbage cans are going to go, I couldn't see it, because that yard, and how you get that down, the north side of the house, it's, it's right up and it's shot, it's been some, some of those, like, all of them, so that's really fit, from the, on the sidewalk. So I don't know when the garbage can is going to go, um, and also, with that, people in the house, in their backyard, and where they go, they need to go outside to relax in the summer, and they're all going to be conviving in the front, um, into their backyard, that's a concern, and then also into that, find the people in small house, um, who's black men, who's like, who's not black men, but he's coming, going all night, who's not, so it becomes a social problem, um. Oh, we, we, uh, I'm trying to answer the question, so I'm wondering if there's, there would be some way for them to get out, because there's here to be enough room to put one of those, uh, iron staircases, for people to get out, and because it is so small, and you could get one in here, I didn't get out one way or another.
Well, that, I think, is a code issue. You know, yeah, but that's, that would be a code issue.
Also, some of your staff during their time giving these crazy, they pulled up their, the PPS side near the port, because we're having some social compliance issues, and now, we're at, against the law, um, so, those are my issues. Also, we're on the street with some of the, sort of, people, over
Okay, well, that's not believing, that's like believing what you hear on the internet, you know what I mean? Somebody's story. Yeah, no, you're right, you're right. Right. Yeah, no, I agree, I understand. Okay, thanks for that, Tina. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Okay, I can't see past you there, but come ahead. What's your name?
Um, so, and just say that, you know, they, they, so I'm just wondering, could it be, could it be that our, have to be, um, and that, and not, like, you can't bring a car to the weather?
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anybody else? How about on, um, zooming there, Joe Johnson, I, oh, your hand is up. You don't want to speak in opposition? You're the owner. Oh, that's you, okay. How about Joanna? Is, is that somebody who wants to speak? Or who's above Joanna? Okay, but I just want to make sure everybody who's above Joanna there, um, Angie? Okay, he's not anybody we have to worry about either, okay. So, Jeff McDonald, we didn't hear from that person either. Okay, whatever, give you an opportunity. Any, no, anybody else here who doesn't want to speak? Okay. Um, do we have any further questions from the board, or do we want to give Neil an opportunity to answer these questions? From Tina, the parking, I know, is supposed to change with the new zoning ordinance. You, of course, aren't interested in the new zoning ordinance because you don't believe it's coming, but if it does, parking is addressed there, so to
Well, can, can, can I ask a, a quick favor? I, I really, uh, it was difficult for me to hear all the points, um, that were being made by the
Okay, let me just tell you what the four of them were.
Just a, a quick summary, if you
Yeah.
don't mind.
There's a garbage cans going, I, people point out the back. Uh, is this going to increase the social problem in the neighborhood, and people congregating out in front on the front stoop, as we call it in the, or, on the front stoop? Um, because there's no place to go, and as far, uh, Tina was concerned about the egress, but as I suggested, those sorts of things, uh, have to go along with
Yeah, we still have to get a building permit.
You gotta do, you gotta do what they say, or
Yep.
That's rough. So, they were basically, um, her concerns. And so, to create, like, you know, and then as far as, like, people making noise in the apartment, you know, I would think that would be internal apartment noise, or issue, an internal issue within the building itself. Whether you have three apartments or you have six, if people are going to blast their music, it's going to be a problem for other people, and that's not a reason not to have six. You know what I mean? Because if you had three, you can have, you would still, uh, have to have the same problem, could conceivably have the same problem. Um, but as far as, you know, congregating out front, because you can't get in the back, is there a backyard there? And are they going to put the garbage cans on the street, or are they going to go in the back? So those are
Yeah, so, uh, I don't have a firm answer for that, but there's, uh, just given the size of the units, it's not, it's not going to be a huge volume per, per se, these are they're, they're small units, they're likely single people living by themselves, so I'd imagine the garbage stays in the unit until it's garbage day. I don't know what the pickup schedule is here, but I know that in some places it's twice a week. Um, there is a place out front for garbage cans that don't have to be in the street, that's the depth of the stoop. Um, but we can have the owners keep the garb, garbage management on the property or inside the building until garbage day. Um, does any of that help?
How about the back, how about, uh, the back area, is there?
The back, there's a backyard, it's landlocked, right? We can't use it for parking, but we could have trash storage there until trash day, if that helps.
And it's also a spot where, um, the residents might tend to go to congregate, well, I didn't want to say congregate, that sounds bad, but
There's
your book, you can do it in the backyard.
There's outdoor, there's outdoor space that's not on the stoop. Available, yes.
Okay.
Uh, how much, uh, space between the edge of the stoop that you have going out for people to, uh, sit outside?
Oh, I think you, I thought you were referring to the back, weren't you, backyard, Neil?
Yeah, I thought, I thought the, the, the concern is to make sure that there was outdoor space available for social gatherings that wasn't on the street.
Correct.
Yeah, there's, there's a yard, there's a rear yard, if you look at the drawing, it's, um, uh, there's a lot of space.
Okay, there's a lot of space in the back, yeah. Which you, you could sit on stoop too, but, um, you know.
Uh, yeah, I mean, that gets into, uh, yeah, that's a urban lifestyle choice. Where do you draw the line?
Yeah, yeah, no, as long as there's a possibility of going in the back.
Yes.
That's good to know.
That's what we're saying, is there's plenty of room back there.
And the parking? Is
There's like no way to comply at all with the current zoning, regardless of units. comply at all with the current zoning, regardless of units. There is no off-street parking available with this parcel.
Right.
Mr. Johnson already owns the property. Oh, sorry. The property to be owned by the applicant?
That is correct.
Um, now I'm going to ask this because I ask it frequently. Has the owner or would the owner consider offering an incentive to residents um, who would be mass transit? Riders, bike riders, things of that nature that would alleviate some of the parking issue? Not that it would be a condition on, on a variance, but.
Yeah, that's, and that's basically, I think I've responded to you specifically before is that the owners are happy to consider those things, but would ask that's not a condition of the approval.
Okay, do we have any further questions for the applicant? Uh, Tina, are you comfortable with the answers you got, even though you might not like them? Well, that's what I said would have to comply with code, wouldn't it? Everyone agree here, Elena or Angie, Neil?
I can't hear what.
The question was, how many people in the front apartments get around if they had to have something to do with the fire escape or whatever to get out and.
That's, that's building code. The project is required to get a building permit and will meet code.
Right, and they're not going to let anybody, they're not going to give you permit if, if you're going to have a wrong word, but landlocked apartments in the front where you're stuck. Got to have two. Right.
There's.
But if you do have a gang, well, yeah, but that's, they got to do, they got to meet or they can't, they can't have it. Yeah, yeah, it's a good concern, but it has to be addressed.
Yes, we are required to, to submit for building permit and the project will meet code. This is a complete gut renovation. It's already been, it's already been completely gutted. I think this was a land bank property. But they actually tore down a portion, a rear portion of the building that was structurally failing.
Okay, do we have anything further from the board? Eva, did you have a question? No, okay. Anybody want to either make a motion or discuss further? Oh, I'm sorry, Katie's going to do the secret.
Uh, Madam Chair, for PLZBA twenty twenty three zero 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 three, um, I'd ask the board to find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second? Jack? Okay. All in favor? I opposed, Carrie. Do we have a motion to, on the proposal? Do we have to do each one of these separately? No. Just one area variance, right?
Taking several area variances, but it's up to the person making the motion if you want to take them as a whole or individually.
Okay.
I think with this project, it would make sense to take them as a whole unless they're somewhere.
All right, so does anybody want to make the motion? Yep.
Uh, Madam Chair, for PLZBA twenty twenty three zero zero three, I would make a positive motion to approve the following area variances. Uh, the minimum lot area requirement, the front setback requirement, the side setback requirement, the maximum density and the parking space requirement. I do not believe that uh, an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood. It would be great to see vacant building renovated and um, you know, back in use in tip-top condition. Um, I believe the majority of the area variances are not substantial. I don't think the environmental impact of in the neighborhood, I do not believe will be affected. And I think, you know, hopefully it will be, I, I believe it will be a nice addition to the neighborhood. So that's a positive motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Second, eighty seconds. And on the motion, John Normile?
I don't know. Uh, for the first three issues, there's nothing that can be done about the lot area or the front or side setbacks. Also in regards to parking, uh, we discussed that before. If you try to put in enough space to fulfill building, but because of the density issue, it's more than double what's allowed. Uh, nothing uh, mentioned about the, an exploration of how this benefit could be found by some other feasible means. I think that at some point, too much density will create an undesirable change in the neighborhood. I think this is part of it. This particular part of the approval, density is substantial. And based on fact that the new owner looked up all of the issues, being an experienced owner in the neighborhood, that it is self-created for all those reasons I vote no.
Jack McCann?
I also have the same issues that Normile had. But I think the as opposed to a vacant house, which as we know, that are were commonly referred to as shoe galleries and vacant buildings. I think that overrules what I was against, so I vote yes to approve.
Eevee Dante? Pardon me? Oh, okay, you're voting to approve. Okay, yes. And Kathy Conroy, vote to approve. Did you already vote, Katie? No, you did not.
I made the motion. I would vote yes to approve.
Okay, so there you go. You have the four yeses, one no, so you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
And we trust you be an asset to the neighborhood.
Better be.
Yeah, you better be, right. You'll have Tina Ozian on your back.
Okay, thank, thank you, everyone.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. John Normile motion to adjourn. Second, Katie, all in favor? I. Carrie.